Notice is hereby given to the City Council of the City of Caldwell, Burleson County, Texas, will begin in a regular meeting at the City Hall Council Chambers. 107 South Hill Street, Caldwell, Texas, regular meeting place thereof at 5:30 PM, May 2021, 2024, please stand with the education and pledges.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for your meaningfulness. And Father, as we conduct business for this city, we just ask for your blessings upon our conversations. We ask your blessing that you give us very great wisdom and very great discernment on making the decisions that are pleasing not only for the citizens but more importantly for you. And thank you for this city. We thank you for all the volunteers. We thank you for the law enforcement and the first responders that help keep our communities safe. We ask your blessings upon not only this city but this state and especially this country. Let us all glorify and honor you by the way we speak, by the way we speak and the way we act. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
That's the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Good afternoon and welcome to everybody. We're going to begin with Citizens to be Heard on City-related Topics, and that is going to be Mr. Steve McCoy with Haven Animal Rescue of Texas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Appreciate the time this evening. I've handed out to you a little kind of cheat sheet there. It's kind of the year-to-date through the end of April of where we are on our activities with our animal rescue. Our first D.C. is 22 and 23, our intake, those two years were 691 dogs. We only did dogs then. Year-to-date right now, through the end of April, we've taken in 155. If you project that based on monthly, we're on pace to take in 465 dogs this year. So, there's a lot of them out there. Our outcome, 586 for two years, we're at 127 right now, on pace to hit 381 there. That number there, number of dogs, is overwhelming in 2024. At the end of April, we had 150 dogs in our care. We've got 180 right now. Lots of puppies, lots of dogs. It's been active. We closed our intake for the time being, and we've got some adoptions going out, things like that. Well, I hadn't been, I didn't come in March because granddaughter was playing softball. But we had a lot of puppies, and you know, puppies, you've got to get them nine or 10 weeks old and weaned and all. I mean, yeah, before we could do anything with them. So, we've had five, six, seven liters of puppies and a bunch of dogs. It's just been one of those deals. We've got 180 in our care right now between, out at the rescue itself and in all of our, all of our fosters are completely full. Something else that I've added this time that really didn't think about, but through the end of April, we've had 129 calls for assistance with dogs. Some of those are things we can handle, some of them are things we don't do. Some of them are people just saying, "I've got this dog, and I had a baby, and I don't want the dog." I mean, it's, it's all kinds of things. We try to accommodate what we can, but we keep a log of that so we can kind of refer back if there's room for expansion. But 129 calls in four months, just in Burleson County. That's a list of the grants that we've applied for, right there on the top. We got funded last, in the last couple of weeks, we got $1,000 from the Binky Foundation, and then Saturday, we got our check from Mutt Nation. It's the It Takes Balls, sponsored by Miranda Lambert. She's actually the one that's the head of that foundation that does that. We were fortunate to, first time she's done it in Texas. She started in Tennessee, did it a couple of years. This year, she did East Texas, North Texas, and the Panhandle, and tried to do the whole state next year. She gave $130,000 out of Texas, and we were fortunate enough to get $2,500. It is restricted for spay, neuter, use only. So, we're going to use that to try to, our hope is that, that's not going to go very far, you see what we've got, but that, our hope is that we can get our spay-neuter numbers up and our dogs that we have to, that we have to take in down. That's, that's the big goal. The Project SNIP of Burleson County, there are monthly spay-neuter clinics that we have over at the Expro Center, normally on the second Monday, Monday. Year-to-date, we've had 33 dogs spayed and 27 neutered, for a total of 60 cats, 52 cats spayed, 32 neutered, for a total of 84. Again, if you project those out, and here, here's the concerning part, that would be 180 dogs that we spay or neuter this year as opposed to 465 we're projecting we might take in. So, our objective with getting spay-neuter and doing, doing things like that is to try to get that number up and get that other number down. I mean, that's, that's the big pie in the sky goal. We're applying for anything we can to get help with it, and like I said, we're very thankful for Miranda Lambert bringing, bringing her foundation back to Texas where she grew up. That's kind of all I've got. That's our activity right now. Has anybody got any questions? Well, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, our consent agenda items. Have you guys had an opportunity to look over everything?
I'm moving your tip, but consent, consent, agenda items as presented.
Give me a second. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda items as presented, raise your right hand. No opposed, motion passes. Next, we'll go into a public hearing. Notice is hereby given to the City Council, County.
Not going to be all rushing through it. That's why we have the detention pond to slow the water flow, and that's going to come here to the street and to this drainage channel that's existing.
But regardless, I know that ditch. Manny Pipkin can tell you, he's right by it. My folks' house is two houses down. It takes all it can take. I've seen Manny's house, water up under it. I've seen Dad's house, he finally put metal on his fence to keep water from going. I just can't see where it takes anymore. And I know, I know you do your elevation, your topography and hydrology reports and stuff, but it's not always perfect on that. I know, I know what happens over there, and I know this is being recorded. I'm just saying my part so that the city will know and that y'all will know when they're starting getting flooded and water up under houses. Y'all were told so.
So, when we had done this, we'd actually had been, the flow had actually been going in between, I can't remember the neighborhood, neighbor here, but we're actually drastically reducing the flow that was going through here when we have, when we put this detention pond in and the channel here. It's actually reducing for a larger rate.
Was that before you had all the concrete, you had all the streets and the gutters that's pushing it all that way?
But that's why the detention pond's there. Slows it down.
Well, well, we'll see. Just, once you're, once you're ready to pull out of the detention pond.
Out of the detention pond? I don't have engineering calculations on it, but it was, we spoke with Strand, we worked with the city on it, it's drastically reduces. Yeah, it's on the corner. So, Main Street and Owee Street are right here, and it's going to be in this corner right here.
Two up in Sunset, right on the corner.
Oh, right here?
Yes.
Okay.
Flooded off the literal length of here, but this is just dark like this. They have a pot to take it off, walk. And Thomas, we work near here. So, we're, we know the water's flowing.
What we're, what we expect to happen is that with the way the street is built, we're the, so right here, this is where the easement is going, the drainage easement. So, it's going right there and then into the ditch here. Yeah, just east of Tarcha.
What would you add, miss?
Two up in Sunset.
Corner of Owee Street.
Because we already have water running from that house, can't wait for years.
And that's, that's what we saw, and that's why this detention pond is going to stop it and put all the water going this way. So, y'all should be, y'all's existing conditions will improve once the whole detention pond is built, because the water, it's stopping the water there.
I know there was one deep pond swimming back there. Is that one, is that going to be coming in?
Yes.
And y'all are building it, building that? You're going to put more clay or whatever in it?
Yeah, we're going to build that in.
I'm Manny Pipkin. I live, my wife and I live 206 Sunny Street, been there 41 years. I have photos of, since 2010, since the street was re-graded. Here's a video of last Thursday. We have suffered damage to our homes in the past because of the flooding. The drainage ditch you have now is overwhelmed. Expect right now, we're in May, we've had ground saturation, that pond is full. The two and a half inch rain we got the other day, the street was flooded, it's in the thumb drive, and the flume can't handle it. My backyard's flooded because I put in a driveway myself a few years back. No assistance from the city. Took me six years to get a permit to put that driveway in with the city, former city manager, to approve elevations. My neighbor put up a 12-inch steel wall that what did flow between our two yards quit flowing between our two yards and flooded me worse. Your detention ponds may be for your retention of water, but it's probably mandated by TCQ for oil and grease retention most of the time. So, it can say it's a retention pond, but-
It's actually for the stormwater retention. There are no oil and grease water requirements in the City Hall.
So, but that retention pond that you're, say you're sending it to, is overwhelmed as it is. So, it has nowhere else to go except through my property and Doug's property, Harry Matek's place, Thomas's place, he's sending it right to us. I mean, it's even worse with, I mean, the streets, driveways and roofs, it's going to get there in a hurry. Now, it has a little ground cover to slow it down some, but it's going to get there in a real hurry now with the roofs, streets and pavement. So, I honestly wish y'all would reconsider. And have y'all walked Copper Hollow? Have y'all seen what it does at Highway 36? I mean, it can't drain through there well enough to take what's come off all that. Because that's where all that goes, is to Copper Hollow, and then it goes to Davidson Creek on the other side of 36. Thank you for your time.
I live at 401 on Sunny Street, and there's a pond directly behind my property, and I'm not concerned so much about flooding. I've never had it flood in my property. You know, I'm talking about that pond?
Yeah.
And I have all those red buildings, and the thing I'm worried about right now is I've had several little trees on that side, the other side of the fence fall on my place. So, I'd like to see all those trees gone. They're just hackberry trees, they have very shallow roots, and it doesn't take much going in to knock them over, and that's my problem. Thank you.
I don't know if anybody knows, but I'm Carl Morris. I run tractor division down at 36, and the first thing I'd like to do is thank the Council for listening to me. Mr. Morris, I thank for the invitation to come with me. I feel like I'm one adopted child. I didn't give one. But anyhow, that's okay. I own the land side of Brooks Brothers Wall. But what y'all trying to do, I'm not against the project, but I'm, I'm against the water. And I know how much water comes through my lot from that top, that hill also. And y'all can put it in your notes, if they flood me out, I'm going to sue all of you. So, it's up to y'all. I don't see the state of Texas being represented here at the Highway Department. They need to be here. Walmart's not represented, Brooks Brothers not represented. Brooks Brothers hold down there, I mean, Walmart's holds where they unload trucks. They're going to have to swim to get them trucks in if you're going to put a street out there. And then this housing, this subdivision, who's going to put the dollars behind the infrastructure of this?
Oh, we are. We're, we're building the entire infrastructure.
No, we, I'm talking about the water and sewer line, how the city's going to handle this. Because I got a sewer, I got a sewer, this station right side of me that goes, and I'll tell you what, I went in there Friday night after tractor save, the red light was on, and it was buzzing crap out the top going in the ditch, going to Davidson Creek. Nobody even came to a Monday morning, and you could drive down the highway instead. So, how are you going to handle? And I don't think, I don't think, is all three water wells up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I was concerned about the water. Well, like I said, I just, you know, I can't see how it's going to work, but I need to take a look at it. So, I need to represent the state of Texas here on the highway down there. And we've got, I got a picture, I didn't give much, but I do have ladies got a picture of that thing flooding, I mean, flood.
Can you show me where your property is?
Right side of Brooks Brothers Wall.
Right here?
Yes. I go all the way down.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And I'm not selling, so that's, we'll figure about that. And I'm not going to take your floodwater either. But I, this, this wants to know that I was here before, ready last year, but similar cost, and it's a mess right now, and they didn't do anything about it. They ain't going to do anything about it. But if I get your water, I will see to, that y'all will get sued. But I, I've been with Governor Adams, Ms. Amy, and I, we got to know each other pretty well. There are a couple of other organizations I've talked to, E.C., Idaho Waco, I've got to know the President of that. So, like I said, you know, I'm ready. I mean, but don't, I ain't against the project, but do something with your water and make sure your utilities are going to do what you want.
Yeah.
And what you're going to do is bill, take your money, you're going to run and leave us, leave the taxpayers and the counties worried. We don't need that. We've got enough worries to beat. So, y'all, are y'all going to vote on it tonight or not?
I just, I shouldn't have the options.
They have the option.
You going to leave the state out?
We reached out to them today.
Today? Yeah, I did too. They didn't know anything about it. But, you know, it's whatever y'all want to do, but like I said, I'm not going, I'm not going to lay down. I can tell all of y'all. And again, this fourth office did, appreciate the invitation. I feel like unwanted child, but that's okay. That's all right. Anybody got any questions? So, I take a little medicine, I get a little shaky, get hot, so I'll back soon.
Any more comments or questions for the developer here?
Most likely.
Thanks.
Well, if you got any questions.
And nobody's on strand here.
But they haven't moved the project.
Did they contact the state? We haven't contacted the state.
State was contract, contacted through other, other forms, but we, we did have a discussion with them today and sent the drainage plant to them, and they've responded that they're, I forget what their exact words were, but basically that they're going to just watch and see what happens with it.
Oh, really? I just get flooded first before they react?
Well, I don't, of course, you have-
Thank you for sending us this info. We're going to have to monitor the water flow and see what effects it has on the drainage to stay Highway 36 because we potentially don't want it flooding any home or business. Please proceed with your council meetings and then up.
What Main Street found?
Not right there. That section is city. I'm going to have to find out.
Good. Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Now, that water is coming underneath 36 down Copper Hollow, that creek I call it, y'all call it Copper Hollow over here. That water's going to come underneath that bridge, and that bridge is going to handle just so much water, and it's going to be like coming out of a dam when it comes out there with pressure. And those houses down below, they're going, they're going to be flooded, I can tell you that. And I got the same problem with the proj, the project y'all started back here behind my house. I already got some of their dirt I've already turned to. But anyhow, I just, I just thought about that, and I'm sorry. I appreciate your respect. I'm going to watch the rest of the way. Give me one favor. Don't, don't make a decision tonight. Let the public hear some more and get them, get everybody represented. You're going to have very few handful of people, I can tell you that. Thank y'all. Thank you, man.
Morris, do you have a copy of the stand support or?
I don't understand this thing.
As far as drainage support?
Yeah.
I would ask, you know, just as we kind of keep this moving, do the council have a lot more questions regarding the drainage? Do we need to take a look, a broader look at it, at least measure or ask the scope that Strand looked at in approving what they have for, for this project? Do we need to take a look, a broader look at it, at least measure or ask the scope that Stran looked at in, in approving what they have for, for this project?
I think we need to take a spin.
So, in other words, what I'm saying is, I'm not sure how they analyzed the project, if they just looked at the amount of water that comes off of the property, or if they looked at... I know they didn't study the entire drainage basin, which is really...
Is that right, is it just the drainage of the subdivision, or did they go further, you hit it right on hit?
So, so if that's some of the questions, it's a lot of the concerns that I'm hearing from, from our audience here. And we wanna make sure we do this right from the beginning. So I'm, I'm putting that out there, and it has, that's something the staff can do, is we can get some more information, if that's what needed.
I think we need more than that.
Is there, so, a- anything else that you'd like for us to bring back, or that we'd like for the developer to bring forward, or?
Right now, it all kinda runs, left, if I'm looking at the property, left to right, correct, which is towards Sunny Street, correct? But my understanding was...
There's a portion of it goes, I'd say probably, I'd have to look at the drainage report again, but I believe it's probably sixty percent of the waters go that corner along, that drains into Sunny Street. Probably roughly another thirty-five percent that goes into that bottom south, I guess plain southeastern corner, and then there's a small little bit that goes into Main Street, but not anymore.
And where's the, the, what, the flow into the south pond, detention pond, where's that, and that flows onto Main Street from there, correct? On the south side? Am I right? Yeah, or well, or I don't know where, north side.
Yeah, and so Main Street is on the west here, or on the west side.
Yeah, so, so the, the, so you have the detention pond by Sunny Street, and then you have the one on the opposite side of the property. Where's that, and that one's flowing to Main Street or to, um, OSR?
Yeah, no, it's, it's going, um, towards Main Street.
Main Street, okay.
I think the state has, the water can't get out of there now, through the cover, cause it backs up to, um, the Tocorrio, or wherever it is, even this last one. So, I, I think the state is a valid deal, they need to be involved in this.
And so, so as staff, I mean, I, I, we'll, we'll own that, we did not involve Tech Stop early enough, and that was one of the questions that we, I asked today, is how, how do I know when we need to get y'all involved? And they, they have had just a small window of time to review this, so, you know, that, that could be something else that we provide further details, and then have our engineering team look at it from a, a broader scope.
Can you motion to seek further information?
Um, I would say, uh...
Okay. I will say, the man that just discussed over here, where that arrow is, that's across the road, that's his problem.
Yeah. He's on the other side of Main, I believe.
I'm just saying, that's where, I guess that's Stran that says, that's okay to flow there.
Let's see, that's a major drainage dish on the side of this property, where the old pit drill used to be, I know under the road, straight to Sunny Street. That catches pretty well the whole west side of, west side of town over there, goes into, also.
And it needs to be cleared, and that was an open topics later on, so. I got it on list, so I'm not making it up.
Same as the one on Sunny, we might have to clear it all the way down to, like, where J D six is.
From wherever the cement channel stops, from there all the way to the highway. And even the street that dead ends, coming off of twenty-one.
OSR and, uh, by the vape shop, what is that, Shaw?
No, the one that goes by the, uh... Yeah, behind cross, thank, thank you. Cause that, that channel there is grown up too.
The city's never done, the, the drainage swum by my house, the city has never gone past the concrete. That's as far as it go, like, nothing else exists, oh, that's not a problem, but that's where all the water is.
Well, like I said, I got it on my phone, and I'm not making it up, that was gonna be an open topic tonight, 'cause I run around the town filming this last, this last two and a half inches. And, uh, that was one of the topics, so, it's not because of, of y'all's issue, and I understand your issue, but it, it's been flooding down there. I call it, I, let me call it Pops' Old Diner, uh, to that building there, for years, so...
I'll, I'll tell you, we've lived there forty-one years, the only time that I had water in my yard, and Mr. Drake's yard, Mike Poteka lived in the house next to me, was it was eighty-nine or ninety, when we had twelve inches of rain in two hours.
Yeah.
And we just had dirt barges back then, that's all we had. Poorly paved streets, whatever, we were so grateful when we got our streets paved, until June of two thousand ten, when we got the runoff for the first time, and it was a three-inch rain. And then it's been steady ever since. And there's photos dated on the back of every photo of different times, we were home to be able to take pictures.
So, the way the state law reads is that you can't necessarily deny the application, but you would approve it with conditional conditions attached to it. So, the conditions would be additional drainage details of the entire drainage basin, and then Tech Stop review approval of the project in regards to the drainage and flowing into thirty-six right away.
So what is that, that, if we find?
So we'd have to tell, we'd have to bring it back and give y'all all the details based on those two conditions, and once they met those conditions, then it would change.
Oh, say the conditions again.
Um, I think I'll do a rapid, uh, revise, just to get my, feedback. Um, so additional drainage details of the entire drainage basin, and then Tech Stop review and approval of the drainage, uh, basin into S H thirty-six.
How soon do you think Tech Stop would even review that?
I think, uh, the bigger question is how long is it gonna take us to conduct a, a drainage basin study that is gonna help us make a, a good decision on this? Yeah, if the council recalls, we, we did a, a drainage basin study on the west side, we paid fifty thousand dollars for it, I mean, money well spent, we identified the solution right off the bat, it was kind of something that's been, I feel like staring us in the face for a while, but, you know, we just...
Didn't see it.
So I, I would say we're gonna have to undertake something like that. Cause as we're sitting here talking, I'm getting text messages, you know, with, with more information on it, that this is an issue.
How soon would, just out of curiosity, it's not probably gonna make a difference in the judgment here, but how soon would y'all plan on starting?
Uh, we were probably mid to late June. Forrest, we're excited, would y'all be able to share those pictures, that, and as well as the video, just, just so we can add for our record, so we can make sure, verify everything? Well, I just gotta take pictures of the center to our engineering folks, and the video, I can't.
You have to, you can't, can't...
Proceed really, just have questions as far as, we have to be procedurally?
Any questions for Forrest? Okay, no, no questions.
Not procedurally?
Well, I mean, he explained it. And if we have to call it another meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, if you have to call the meeting.
So, they will have to motion to approve, based on those conditions. And, uh, have a call meeting?
We'll bring it back later.
Or bring it later?
Will y'all send us the letter again, when y'all, when y'all brought that?
We will have to.
So are we still talking about drainage? I, I wanna know about traffic, I, it was mentioned, can you show me where the plan is for traffic? So those two Xs are on to, uh, Main Street? Scroll on down.
It'll step out here for future connection.
Future connection?
Yeah.
With the back of Sunny Street?
It'll, one will connect back to Seven Street, and then the other one will connect over back to Dairy Drive, which you will be approaching. So there's Sunny Street and there's Dairy Drive.
So you're gonna tie into the, do a metal job?
Yeah.
Right there.
So it'll step out, kind of, right here.
But that's on a later date?
Yes, and, yeah, that's not necessarily part of what they're gonna do, that, to be the body that develops that.
Like a Weederhold chill on that line, correct?
Uh, I don't think so, it was the old Champion Forest project, that was supposed to be planted and developed in twenty twenty, and then it felt too fine.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the variance request with, no, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the final plat, or right to run subdivision, with the conditions of additional, checking on additional drainage?
Details.
Details.
For the entire drainage basin?
And a text dot review of the drainage basin, basin leading to highway thirty-six. No motion?
You're saying we have...
So, the, the motion, you can deny the motion, or you can approve the motion?
My, my concern is, is, is the, the time period, the time period of, to do a survey, study, again, and we don't know more about that than me, most surely, but, in, in the state. I mean... Cause I looked, we got a meeting, went on the thirty-first to be able to listen to all the new plans, but I didn't, for bridges, uh, in the county, on state stuff, so, I just don't know how quick they react, because some of that stuff was five-year planning. So... I know June is not realistic, in my opinion.
So if we deny it, then what?
If you deny it, then it will be denied.
But, then we have, we're gonna start all over from the very beginning, once we find out the flip?
Yeah, basically, we do, we have to go back through the whole process.
And approve the planning, and, but we could do all that in one quick meeting, correct?
Be ready, please.
This is like...
I mean, either way, the timeline is not gonna work, because we have to do both theory notice again, so that's at least a month now, no matter what.
But if we approve it tonight with those conditions, and then we find out from the conditions that it's, some changes need to be made, then we still have the right to deny it at that point, at that point, correct? So if we approve it tonight, it just keeps moving forward, but we still have the right sometime in the future to deny it?
Correct.
Upon findings?
Okay, so, the findings from any type of engineering and group and everything else...
Determines whether the project, we approve the project to move forward, yes?
It's y'all's decision, but yes.
There's no time limit, no, right?
I mean, it could take...
By our surveys, by gathering information, okay, I, I don't wanna be put in a corner, and, until we know more about the flow patterns.
I mean, they're not gonna be able, with the conditional approval, they're not gonna be able to proceed until we get those findings.
Okay.
And then y'all would vote based on that, don't take approved or denied?
Does the city gonna, you go through and do another poll, or the contractor, or the developer goes through and does another flow analysis? Are you gonna get another party to confirm that information before you make a vote, or are you gonna go on their word?
So the city engineers will review whatever they provide.
And they're still out of brown?
Yes, sir.
They're the ones that jacked up the street to begin with, so they're not worth the flip, I get flooded now worse now than I did before two thousand ten. So...
Manny, on, on, do you think the flooding is caused by the water flow not being able to go underneath thirty-six fast enough, backing up? Cause you live there, you see it, is it, can you tell that the flow is, is stopping because it can't go anywhere?
No.
Okay.
It's part of the problem, it's part of the problem. With the flume next to my house, I don't own that property where I park my camper, that's the city east. Johnny Price had then built that flume, it's way too narrow. And the, the curb stops they put on there, they need to be flumed open, flared open, to let the water in, you can't do that now, it just flows right by down the street. You know, but it can't handle any more than what it has now, so thank goodness that the flume's not, you know, it's not wide enough, and it doesn't, it can't get in there, it just flows right down the street. We have ribbon curbs, we don't have curving gutter, ribbon curbs don't have nothing, it just lets it run all over the street, through our yards, through everybody's yards.
Forrest, would you be able to pull up the map again? Can you just leave on, on the flume here? I'm just curious, it's the way I'm, I wanna make sure I'm hearing you right, so, where you're having, that's your camper, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so your, the issue we're having is that it's backing up here, and it's starting to spread over the flip, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And it's not, it's not that it's getting backed up here, it's that it's getting backed up right here?
Well, that's my backyard, how you like that?
Not great?
Great in my side yard, great in my front yard. There's your street, partner. There's your street, partner. That's, this is the flume.
Mm-hmm.
This is the street.
Yeah.
Goes right past. This is at the end of, this is where the flume tees.
Yes.
It's already at max and has other flow coming from senior retirement.
Yes, so it's pushing it back out.
Oh, yeah. My backyard?
Mm-hmm.
My yard?
Mm-hmm.
So it's just endless. They're dated on the back. There's my front yard. It goes right past, cannot, because of the way the entrance there, the water can't get in the flume, it's running, there's, there's no de-energizing or anything in the street. So it just goes down the middle of the street.
Yeah.
So. There's my front yard. I put in a driveway and raised it up.
Yeah.
But. This is these standards in the water, thank y'all. Y'all can have, y'all can look at it under the thumb drive, would that what happened last Thursday? And that was an hour and a half after the rain.
That's probably the only area I didn't grab.
Someone.
I'll email them to you.
Okay.
There's a thumb drive.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the final plat with those conditions?
Does it have to be approved or denied to make the table for?
That's what I want to say. For those.
I, I, it seems like a lot of trouble with it, so I was just an idea there for you.
Very motion passed, man.
Yes, it's the way the state law is written, that it has to be approved additionally because it meets all of the code requirements, so therefore they can technically deny it. If they, if there was something in there that didn't meet the code requirements, then they could deny it, but because it meets the code requirements, then it's an external issue for the surrounding area for the drainage basin, so that would prove the condition.
That's where the issue is.
Well, you, oh. We can, yeah, we, we, with the conditions, and just like you said, we can always come back and if something doesn't meet.
It's going to be brought back to you.
Yes, we can deny it at that point, but, um, but as you said, there's no hurry in text on it. I mean, they can come back and say, yeah, there's, you know, this is not going to work, you know, but there's no hurry in them, they go take forever.
What was that? Can take a very long time to respond to being held, so.
Yeah.
But we can. My co, we have in-house engineering, I know, we can't, it's conflict of interest for us to do our own drainage study, but.
I saw the, with the conditions and they come back that are not important, deny at that point, if it, you know, there's conditions, that's all.
Yeah, the process, we don't need to go back through the whole process, we just need to confirm what, if not, it can be fixed properly by studies, by professional engineers. And, but that, once again, I mean, that goes back to what you just said, Strand did it once, but we even, if we get an outside firm to do the study like we did on North Side of twenty one, Northwest Side of twenty one, uh. You could have two service studies and one say yes and one say no.
That's what y'all make it hard to say.
Yeah.
And that's where it comes in place, you know, where the life that if it, you know, comes to.
I think probably one of the larger items is what needs to be studied, most of this existing flume right here, because it sounds like even before all this, it hasn't been big enough to carry the water going through to the first.
Well, I will tell you, prior to two thousand and ten, there was dirt ditches with two ten horns, two, almost twelve inch.
It's a little bit bigger than that.
Probably sixteen inch ten horn going across to a dirt ditch, the only time it ever flooded prior to nineteen eighty-three. Well, I don't know about prior to nineteen eighty-three.
Yeah.
In the eighty-nine or ninety, when we had the twelve inch, and I had to help my neighbor put the thunder blocks back on anyone's house. I probably haven't put. Sure. It's about fourteen inches.
She always thought instead of pipes up on that road, it'd be better than that, they got it, and all, all water get there.
So, that's.
But it's confined.
I'm thankful, if that's the only thing that slows people going down, people live down the street, it's the only thing that slows them down, it's deeper, what are my feelings about?
Didn't there, uh, value, uh, ditch further down or, or before?
No.
It's not?
We have a motion on the floor to approve the final plat with those conditions. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor of approving the final plat for the whitetail run subdivision with conditions with additional drainage details and text dot review regarding the drainage basin leading to Highway thirty-six, raise your right hand. All approved, motion passes. Next.
Thank you for your input. Seriously.
Ask a question to the council, you want me to look at outside engineering for this or?
Who did the register?
Strand did the West Side Basin study, I know they did a good job with that, but since they reviewed thus far this project, I mean, probably saved us some money, but if y'all want a third party to look at with outside eyes, then open to that as well.
I would say a third party.
Yeah. Because like I said a while ago, you can get one yes and one no.
Well, you've got Strand has already looked at it, have no problems with it. They generated it with their engineering.
But remember, I'm talking about the broader study, not, not this.
I get it, I get it. Other than I would be good.
Okay, next, regular agenda items, variance request for the minimum lot width to be fifty-three feet at six oh four South Hall Street.
All right, so this is a variance request for. This is a variance request for Juan Zerito and Serena Enterprises. Um, they have purchased this property on the corner of Hall and Fifth Street. There is an existing home on the property that's on that corner and then the, the lot was actually three parcels, and so they're wanting to combine the existing lot and the house into two, those two lots, they want to combine it into one lot. And then the remaining lot is what they want for this variance request. Um, if you look at the CAD over here, uh, this one is the existing home. And then this is that extra parcel. On the CAD, it shows it as all one parcel, but that's because parcels differ from a lot, so the actual flatted lot, there's three flatted lots. So this house is actually sitting across a lot line. Um, so part of this is a cleanup, so you actually amend that and get that onto one lot, and then the remaining portion of that property is short by two feet, so that's why they're requesting the variance for the width, uh, because the width is only the fifty-three feet, and by code, it's required to be fifty-five feet, so they're short two feet. And this will make it to where they don't have to get a variance request for that other lot as they do this amended plot.
So are they, you know, they went to that existing house?
They're leaving, yes, they're leaving that house. This will allow them to actually develop. Yeah.
Okay, can you take a broader view of that street?
That's behind, uh.
Busch one, is that? Okay, okay, I, I know the house in the fifth, okay. And they just cleaned up the lot the other day of the trees and the city.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that a, just a shed, um?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yes, that's just a shed.
So they're going to leave that existing house, or build what, one, two?
One more, they'll only be able to do one more, because this is, this house is on two lots, so they're going to amend the plot, they're going to do amended plot, but they have tenure right now based on this variance request.
Which side?
Right here.
Okay.
This will be the additional.
They also own that corner lot across from that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is this?
Yes.
So they're also asking for side variance as well?
No, this one is just the. Regular variance.
So it's going to be ten, ten foot on each side?
Seven and a half is good.
Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Approve the variance. Do we have a second to approve the variance request?
I have a second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And a post-motion passes. Next. I'll do it. Put your hands to me. Three, four, one advance. Next, variance request for the rear setback to be ten feet from the rear property line at five oh three West Buffalo's.
So this is Mr. Mitchell, they were at five oh three West Buffalo Street, um, they purchased the additional fifty feet behind their property, which is actually where the fence line was, but they didn't own that property. Um, this is one of those, you know, higher, uh, lots issues, so you can see, this is the fence line right here, and then the actual property line is kind of right behind that shed. Uh, so they purchased additional fifty feet, um, to get that fence line as part of their property. Um, but by purchasing that additional fifty feet, it still makes it to where they're not able to, um, build the shed that they want to build because they want to make it a shop. So they're asking for that rear setback, instead of it being twenty-five feet, they wanted to make it a ten foot, so that way they had plenty of space to build the shed in the back.
That's going toward the railroad track, right?
Correct.
You believe it?
Yeah, so their house is up here. Oh, sorry, this one.
So we're talking.
My bad, I was. This one, here's the fence line.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you said, uh, okay.
Perfect, so there's two sheds existing, they're going to remove those two and build a bigger shop in close to that. Any question?
No backyard neighbors?
No, it's just any pasture back here. This, the house in the corner is actually the one that owned all of that and it's recently purchased, so they were able to buy that portion of the property from that property owner that now owns that.
I'm pleased we accept this, Dan.
Do you have a second? All in favor of approving the variance request for the rear setback to be ten feet from the rear property line at five oh three West Buffalo, raise your right hand. All in favor, motion passes. Next, department and community reports.
Code enforcement.
Been busy, been busy.
Yep, so Tom was earlier, I like the thing this goes eventually, we want to be thinner, instead of thinner, working up to big, so.
Any questions, comments, others, report status? All right, next, administrative and elected officials' reports.
Can we just go?
Please.
Okay, good news.
We need some good news.
Post Oak Savannah Groundwater Conservation District placed, uh, two grants in their hands a couple of months ago. I'm happy to report to you, they've approved both at ninety percent funding, so on our well rehab project, we're going to be receiving four hundred and five thousand dollars back on that. And then on our AMI project, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars towards that, so very grateful to, uh, receive those, those amounts, so shout out to them. Let's see, on our, our GLO projects, those are, you got your Hurricane Harvey mitigation stuff, so there's, broken down into two projects, one is that streets and drainage project, that includes that street. Complete reconstruction of it, uh, curving gutter drainage, and then some other drains over here off of Bear Street by the other school. That will be going out for bid shortly, we hope to bring it to council July the sixteenth to approve bids. So that is rolling, we have the other section of that being wastewater improvements and the Harvey lift station as a part of that. We've got to procure some property with the lift station, we, we've got it picked out, and we're, we're just working to go ahead and get that aligned before we go ahead and bid that out, so we know we can bid it as designed. So we're shooting for bringing that back July sixteenth too, and maybe the, the office meeting. Uh, same thing with the ARPA, those are the two of the stations that we're going to redo, call the country and pick drill the station. Um, same thing on that, we've, we've got an agreement on the land, we're just having some issues with having the lien released as a part of a larger property, so we're, we're still working through that. So we probably received, we're, we're back on the subject of drainage, we probably received an email from one of our citizens here, Thomas had talked about it. I actually drove through that area, you know, when, when it was flooded like that, we've already contacted the landowner, so we basically just need to cut that ditch out some more. We've got that on the books for next week, so that should relieve a lot of that area, and this is on Pol Street. Going towards the airport, we got that new Rubicon subdivision that's just releasing quite a bit of extra water through the detention pond, and I think once we cut that ditch a little further out, it should, should drain properly. And the last thing I will say, staying on the positive note, is New City Hall, we have pretty much moved in, we're still working out some of the kinks of moving buildings and getting everything back up and functioning, but we are super happy to be over there and have some, some room to, uh, kind of stretch out our legs, and since he came to the meeting, we'll make him stand up and dance. So Shelby Reed is our new building official, he, he joined us this week, so rather than continuing to push things out to Bureau Veritas, we'll still use him where we need him. But Shelby's going to be taking over that, Shelby comes to us from Sea College Station, so we're very excited to have him here. Well, welcome.
Appreciate it.
That's it. That's it.
A reminder, the senior luncheon tomorrow at eleven o'clock at the Civic Center, um, there is a, um, request for anyone who plans to attend to wear blue for Texas.
Awareness.
Awareness.
Perfect time.
Oh, Monday will be closed and, and for Memorial Day, so that's all I have.
I got to do it. Uh, by the way, great job moving, seriously, I was. Uh, by the way, great job, Luke, seriously, I was, I was, well, I, I know you were training though, but they did a great job and, and, but now I got a question, is there any plans for the City Hall, Oak City Hall?
I'm glad you brought that up, because that's one thing, I, I was trying to stay positive, since you brought it up. I, I would like to schedule a workshop, maybe in a couple of, couple of weeks, so we can have some discussion on, on what we can do with this building, and possibly some of our other city buildings, just to, to see how we pull it all together. So we, we can schedule that at the end of this.
I've already mentioned the drainage channels.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Paul Street, you just mentioned it, uh, detention pond off OSR.
Still waiting on funding to release for that, so, um, walking through, give you the, the short story here, we, due to some of the changes we, we made in our accounting and change in our fiscal year, got a little bit behind our audits, so as soon as we catch that up, I'm hoping by the end of, I want to say the middle of June, that we'll have that, and then hopefully they'll release funding for that, we can push forward with that project.
Okay. Uh, street driving looks great, it made a, made a, made a difference, the downtown looks really nice, forest and the main street deal, the cement work turned out better than I think could even be imagined, uh... The, uh... I, I know, it looks like Juan Nacho or whoever is, is there, is gonna start the construction behind Loudmouth and next to the Rodney, I saw the sewer and water being installed there. I talked to, stopped and talked to the building superintendent or the construction supervisor or cat leak today, and he still has a goal of August, if y'all been out there lately, it's major, it's dried in, today they, we're dried in, and, uh, he's still shooting for August. Have we seen any permits for, or any activity, because it, when they brought this up in twenty twenty-three, in January of twenty twenty-three, they said they were gonna have a hundred people to start off with. Have, have we seen any type of?
What permits are you asking?
Well, like how, uh, people moving in or?
We don't have any data to show or reflect or anything to that.
Okay. But, uh, it sure, it sure looks like, I, I thought it'd be, I asked him whether it's gonna be July, and he said, no, it looks like August, so.
They did ask for your extension, they were about to be able to prove that expiration.
Well, you know, twenty, January of twenty twenty-three, and they thought they were gonna have it up, by the end anyway, that's all I had on my list.
Awesome, and, big thank you to Forrest and his team for the citizens concern tab on the front page of the city website. So it is new and up and running, I submitted one today for, on behalf of my friend. So, uh, if you open up a webpage, it's front and center, citizen, what's it called?
Citizen problem.
Problem report, very, very simple, basic to fill out, um, you don't have to call the city, it can all be done online, it gives you an opportunity, name, uh, address, a problem, phone number, email, and then what department you think it falls under, so, anyway, thank you very much for getting that done. Next, um, Cypress Text, it's got hit with a tornado, tornado-type winds last Thursday, the daughter and son-in-law live there, they had no electricity, they came to stay with us. Saturday night at ten fifteen, ironically, our electricity goes out. We told them they were cursing us, anyway, a big thank you to the city electrical crew and their, um, volunteer for getting that up and running, uh, transformer replacement, I believe. So anyway, we appreciate that very much, because it was hot and steamy Saturday night. Um, big thank you to the park crews between Sunshine Rain, Sunshine Rain, they've got a lot to upkeep with, uh, the parks, and they look great. And finally, Civic Center landscaping, who is doing the upkeep for the landscaping, the mowing and edging, did we contract that out?
First, first, yeah.
They're still doing, perfect, okay, looks great. That's what I had.
We, we will be contracting elders soon, every, this week.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay, Jesse?
It's in your program.
Jesse, we on that end of it, no, I, I do have something to report, though, on the disc off, you approved the signage, and it's in, next to production, uh, they're having, uh, on Wednesdays, they're having anywhere from fifteen to thirty people playing the disc off, and it, the cement slab, uh, that are gonna be, the tea boxes are all built, of course, the rain, they can't get in to do the slabs. Uh, they're, they're gonna have the grand opening on the fifteenth, I believe, and he's expecting a, a minimum of fifty people, and we're having, uh, people on the disc off website, people are coming from Colleen, Bastrop, uh, had some from, uh, Austin, so, uh... It, maybe it will be a disc off destination, because, but by November, he thinks he can have a collegiate tournament here. And that will bring in probably a hundred people, and they all go eat.
A hundred participants.
Mm-hmm. Yes, thank you.
We'll circle back on this, because I got notes here, on, on the drainage stuff, we have to wait till it dries out just a little bit before we get in there, we'll start cleaning those out, I'll make sure on some of the stuff we haven't cleaned out in a while, that we have reasons to do so, and, I don't know, Thomas has to deal.
I'll tell you, one, one of you guys talked about Gary off of Porter Street, you'll notice that the south side is pretty plain. With the tree, we let it out, didn't have a gull or anything on there, we created all over and chainsawed. The other side, it's a triangle there, on Sir Richard Survek, he sat there the whole time and watched us, we could not get much of that work done. And to also help, you needed to get over there on Survek property, it goes right down Memorial that I have once, it needs to be cleared out, too, because there was a creek, but now Bruce offered on this, maybe that's easier to fix.
Yeah.
But it's gonna take those away.
But there's trees in the middle of the channel, and, and...
Probably is now.
Yeah, and, I see, it makes, it makes a V, it's making Vs in there.
Yeah, so.
Is that, so that drainage is on this property, or is that, that's a V?
We'd have to get on his side and get trees out, and we were closely watch. But it's gonna take those away.
Yeah.
If you pull more from drainage, you know, you, you got your boys on, your time, more, you can build streets or you can do drainage, you know, probably speaking out of my bankroll, but that's the way it is.
Okay, anything else, guys? Do you have a motion to adjourn? Need me to adjourn?
Hey, Gray, you only been able to speak up, you got boys.